Hello, everybody. Thank you for coming to tonight's city council meeting. I'm Mayor Orr and today is Wednesday, October eighth. It's six thirty-one right now. Can I get a roll call, please?
Alex. Who do you think? Yes. Sorry. Alex.
Yes.
Francie.
Yes.
Gayton. Hotchkin. Here. Gayton's out there.
We talked to you about them.
Uh, Hubbard. Here. Lawrence.
Here.
Backy.
Here.
Orathan. Here. Pericini. Here. Fredo.
Here.
Lord.
He's here.
Taylor.
Here.
Mayor Orr.
The city was unable to unmute our microphone, but it seems to be on right now.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Of course. Right, before we start with the pledge of allegiance, I just wanted to, uh, everybody have put, um, Councilperson Gayton and his wife and his family and their thoughts and prayers. Everyone who has had a difficult time with their child and, and their newborn and anybody just hope and pray that everything goes well. Um, if you'd like to stand for the pledge of allegiance, the plan is over here. Aye.
I want you to just. To define the giant space of America and to the republic for which it stands. On a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Council President Orr.
Motion to approve tonight's agenda.
During discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, we'll start off now with public comments and please, uh, keep your comments to three minutes and, um, be kind and start up with your name and your word, please.
Okay. It is working. Am I good? You're good. Okay. Hey, I'm Ralph. I'm in Ward four. I looked it up from last time. So yay for me. Uh, the day after the last council meeting when I was saying thank you to this city council for all of the intersection improvements, I noticed another improvement and I don't want to be that nerd that comes here and says, thank you for doing full stuff. But I noticed while walking downtown, the crosswalk indicator changes before the traffic indicator does. So I went home and looked it up and it's leading pedestrian intervals was the term for that. And according to the FWHA, it can reduce pedestrian incidents by as much as fifty-nine percent. So, uh, just I, I, I worked in Olympia and we were, we took a break for lunch. We walked down from the Capitol down to get lunch and my coworkers were talking about the crosswalks and I said, yeah, I'm in Aberdeen. We have leading pedestrian intervals. And I, I talked about that and yes, I was a huge dork, but I just, I want to say thank you. These improvements are noticeable. I know you don't get a lot of, um, attaboys for it, but it's really cool. So thank you. Thank you.
Any more com- uh, public comment?
That's right. So I didn't know if this was public comment. Um, April third warning. And my thing is, I don't know what's going on with Sam Van Park and the porta potties, but I'm pretty sure none of you would like to see people piss and poop in public because porta potties are taken away or they come, oh, you can use or, but I'd like to see them back or the bathrooms open because, um, it's disgusting to sit there and watch men stick their wee-wees out and eat. I don't know if, you know, a lot of women would like seeing that. Or a, a woman in front of my husband and I pulled her pants down and took number two. And she's like, well, where else am I supposed to go? To the bathroom. So they've been gone for, I think, a week or so. Um, I don't know what's going on with the porta potties. But, um, it's the park and kids gotta go potty. Elders gotta go potty. And when the, there's no porta potties and there's no bathrooms, what are they supposed to do? So that's my things of debate. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further public comments? All right, then, uh, we'll move on and back to Council President's War.
Motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes minutes from the September twenty-fourth meeting, accounts payable and payroll.
Is there any discussion?
I have two edits to the minutes, minor edits. Um, on the, um, part where we talk about developing the credit debit card transaction policy, we are missing that it was carried by voice vote at the end. And then where we approved the resolution updating the fees and charges to the city's ambulance and emergency services utility, um, that was actually a roll call vote and we should have the roll call there.
Yes. No, it's extra work because he just took in the minutes when somebody was a descending vote. It's a carry by voice vote and then, you know, in parentheses, you're descending vote was. I think that's really helpful for the public reading the minutes. If we could start putting that again, I, I would be grateful, but I know members. Thank you. Anything else?
So, uh, make a motion with the changes. Second. Oh, any, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. I said that one, I should have said that. I, um, I would maintain the motion, so it wasn't me making the motion. Sorry.
Okay.
All right, it's, uh, so for the mayor's report, I don't really have one, um, other than, uh, today Administrator Clemmons and I kind of visited with the, um, Chigalis tribe and, uh, very nice groups of people. Um, we just wanted to let them know that we're here for them if they have, they own some property in Aberdeen. But we're here for them if they would like to work to develop that and we'd like to help them with that and, um, and then just for any other things that we just wanted to know that we're here, are there for them. Uh, it was a nice meeting. Um, any council reports? Councilperson Ellis.
I would like to thank Steph for, um, putting out the council agenda and notes in a fashion that allows us to jump right to certain parts. That's something we've been asking for for years and it's so darn helpful. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council reports? Councilperson Brandon.
I just want to note the, the cleanup by the Chigalis Bridge in Alberta, Heather Creek and picked up four bags of garbage. No syringes anywhere and found frame mantis.
Thank you. Any other reports?
Um, I've kind of just briefly mentioned, thank you for the staff for disposing of the garbage bags. So I really appreciate it.
We appreciate it. Um, any other report? All right, and go to staff reports with Administrator Clemmons. It's, it's so strange looking at everybody looking up at the monitors. We're not used to it.
They're working.
Yeah.
So, um, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to deliver a presentation. Um, it's been a whirlwind of a time here at the city and, um, for the last three years that I've been here and I wanted to just kind of go over, um, some of the things and the milestones and accomplishments that, um, we've been able to achieve during my time here. Uh, the things that I'm going to present to all of you are, I just would like to preface that I don't do alone ever. I'm a teamwork kind of a leader and, um, I am, I'm fortunate enough to serve um, a really, really strong and solid team of directors each day and work alongside them. Um, so I, I just really want to preface that before I dive into this. Um, on the screen you'll see, uh, the org chart. At the top you'll see the residents of Aberdeen, uh, the city council and the mayor and then the city attorney who's kind of a separate entity as well as the municipal court. I have a line attached to her because, um, we do oversee her budget. Um, but as you can see, I am responsible for overseeing eight departments here at the city and the things that's very, very small font that you see below all of that is, um, all of the divisions and the programs and the services that each of those departments run. So like I said, my time here, um, there was, I, I broke this up into three phases. And, um, the first phase, October twenty-twenty-two is when I first started to December twenty-third was truly all about putting out fires. In the first month, I spent meeting with all of the different leaders that we have across Grace Harbor um, and, and here in Aberdeen, including our neighboring cities. Um, immediately dove into union negotiations. We, uh, had a transition from Google Mail to Microsoft Outlook, which might seem like it's no big deal, but that's a very big deal to transition, um, an entire email system and server over to that. Um, we also started in my first year here, started the vacant building program, an idea that I took from the city of Seattle and asked, um, like I said, a very strong directors asked, uh, Lisa Scott and Josh Paget to take it and run with it and that's what they came up with. Um, we also delivered a homeless survey, which was one of the highest participating surveys that the city has ever put out. Uh, we had multiple, every month had, um, community resource homeless cleanup efforts and we partnered with different groups around the city. Um, we had to resolve and finalize and close out the gateway project, um, a resolution that cost the city about nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars, um, which hadn't been resolved. And so I had to resolve that. Um, we had multiple community discussions on homelessness. Uh, some requests from the council and the homeless committee was to get feedback from the community, from the business community. We had some with the church community. We had some with, um, just residences from different wards and then the list goes on. We had so many of those. Um, we also installed lights in fifty of our alleys to improve public safety. We reinstated the arts commission to help make decisions, um, on art around in our, in our public right of ways and how the city was investing its money that way. We also took up the Young Street Bridge project was, which was a big deal. It affected the international community. So we were able to create um, a public path, a pa- a path for the public to be heard. Um, and then also to communicate with, uh, stakeholders who might be affected by the closure of the bridge itself. We renewed or newly formed partnerships. Um, you know, I, I'm real cautious not to like badmouth any, any efforts prior to my arrival, but there were a lot of relationships with different government entities and partners and private entities that were fractured that I recognized I had to fix. So was able to help and assist in re- restoring those relationships. Um, we also improved our water customer service process, a process that, um, had needed to be repaired in order for the city to collect its revenues. Um, we also fixed a relationship with CAP. And because of that, we served customers that had disconnections each month and CAP, we were able to actually bring CAP uh, employees over here and directly work with customers that came in to pay their bills and we'd just send them up to the third floor and they would get their bills paid through CAP. That was a new process that we did that we felt was pretty successful. Um, the city hadn't totally gone back to COVID related, um, or hadn't gone back on certain processes. So we were able to eliminate COVID related processes, um, especially in the realm of like utility payments. So we were able to deal with that and get back to a process where people were paying their bills on time. And because of those changes, um, we were able to recover five hundred thousand dollars in unpaid utility charges. We also spent the first year lobbying like crazy. We secured thirty-five and a half million dollars for the levy project from the state, seventy-two million dollars for, um, the highway rail separation project and then two point one million dollars for the museum funding, um, legislative allocation. And that's just the ones that I was a part of that the staff have also received hundreds of thousands of dollars, whether it's a police grant that they went after or a park grant that they went after, um, or funding to repair, you know, something, you know, funding to repair something that was long overdue. Um, we also lobbied, uh, and other lobbying efforts included a tiny home village, um, which I know is a sore subject, but it was one of our first as like a council and as a stat- and as staff, like we came together to recognize that the homeless issue had to be resolved and that was one possible, um, outcome that, you know, it didn't pass obviously, but it was, it was something that I think one of the first projects that, um, the council became passionate about and was able to like at least work together with the homeless committee to form something and to create some sort of strategy to address the longstanding issue of homelessness. Um, you'll also see that I, in my first year, created several policies sweeping interest that brought in two sweeping interest and investment returns that brought in two million dollars each year, um, for the city. Credit card purchasing, that was something that was longstanding that hadn't been addressed, that needed to be addressed. That was a, a very vulnerable spot for the city. Electronic signatures that modernized the practices within the city that needed to be done. That streamlined, um, getting signatures, employee recognition. That was part of what the council had wanted to, um, to just, to be able to, to thank staff for the work that they're done. They felt that it would increase morale. So we did that and we, we've had since then have had one event that was bring your kid to work, which was a success. And then, um, as well as, uh, a staff recognition event that we had in August, which was a success. We had also a department and an electronic funds trans- transfer policy that I was also responsible for establishing. I established weekly directors meetings, which have turned into bi-weekly meetings where we all meet together to go over our projects that we're working on and to see where cross-sectionally that we would, our, our work would intersect and to work together to remove any barriers that we might encounter in our projects. I also, on the off weeks, when I don't have my weekly, um, directors meeting or bi-weekly directors meetings, I meet with directors one-on-one to see if they need anything from me and to check in on them and the projects that they're working on. Um, I also created, um, a, a bimonthly newsletter, which goes out every other month. I not only created and designed it, I also write all the articles for it and I send that out in our monthly bills. Created the first ever Grace Harbor county administrators group. That's never been done. Have some city administrators that have worked here for twenty years and they've never thought to meet together. So I brought all of them together and now we share resources where we can. We try to, we, we share ideas. We try to, um, just kind of check on what's going on in each city and they have the same problems. So we share policies, we share ordinances, we share ideas. It's a really, really great group of people to get together. I've also encouraged, um, my directors and other employees to gra- to gather with other cities that might have the same, like our public works department now meets with Wash- WashDOT. Um, they also meet with people over at the city of Cosmopolis. So, um, Rick has been, Rick has done a great job. Now our police and fire have already met with, you know, they've already done this more so, this more cohesive and approach and meeting with other people. So I really wanted, um, to extend that, um, to the other departments. Um, so that's, that's another thing that we've been able to do. We, we also have seen a new and improved accessible annual budget that's readable, that's digestible. That's something that you can understand as you're, you're sifting through it and not only you, but also our, um, your constituents. It, it's an understandable budget. Um, we also have revised the ver- the budget to remove inaccuracies and illegitimate accounting practices. One year we, we found an error that had been done. I don't even want to know how long, but it was to the tune of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we were able to correct that. So the city no longer, if audited, we would no longer have that issue. Um, I also encourage our fire chief to create a fire's, fire science class, which has been well attended by not only Aberdeen students, but students all across Grace Harbor. Um, I also established employee performance evaluation process, something that we're always trying to improve, but it was, I don't know that the city had ever had employee evaluations. And so we have that now. I also established our strategic planning sessions that we have every year. Um, and because of that, we, I was able to facilitate all of you creating a vision, mission and goals for the city. Um, when we lost our, um, finance director, I was able to contract and bring in an account, uh, an accountant um, to assist us. And because of that, she was able to help and assist in like cleaning up a lot of the city's finances. We've had clean audits from the state auditor's office. Um, I've met every year that we have, uh, elections, I meet with each council candidate to give them a rundown of your strategic plans, your vision, your mission and all the things that all of you have been working on so that they can hit the ground running as soon as they become council members. I've also renewed, uh, Lemay's contract, something that hadn't been renewed in over ten years. Um, and then, uh, we also delivered, um, cyberwide, or excuse me, citywide trainings, including cybersecurity, sexual harassment, website updating and learning practices. Sexual harassment is something that we have to deliver. We hadn't been delivering that, so now we do. So that was year one. So in year two, um, I focused on building our work culture. Um, in year two, we hosted mayor council member facility tours. Um, we also worked on getting, um, and worked with the county and our community resource groups to set up an emergency cold weather shelter. I can't say that we were successful, you know, every year, but we definitely attempted and we had expressed interest in supporting the county in their vision of having one. Um, we also created an asset replacement plan, something that now the city can financially plan for vehicle replacements instead of scrambling each year to, um, scrambling each year to come up with money and to fight over money. We now have a plan where we can replace our, we have a schedule when of, when to replace our vehicles. Um, you ask for a council member office. I've set that up for you. It has a printer, a computer, chairs, it has space. I think it has a heater, not totally sure, but you do have the space and you do have access to that. Um, I've also renewed, in twenty-twenty-four renewed and established new relationships with huge sound and Pacific Railroad, Quinault Wellness Center, Quinault Enterprise, more neighboring cities and the Quinault Indian Nation, uh, council. We've established in twenty-twenty-four, we established more council budget workshops at your request. Um, we relaunched the Aberdeen library renovation project, something where the library board felt disheartened and didn't feel supported by the city. We were able to launch that again and we now have a project manager and we have a staff member assigned. Lisa, um, Scott is assigned to that project. Um, and then in twenty-twenty-four, we lobbied more to keep those tax dollars in Aberdeen. Um, so we made contacts where we could. We invited the Washington Transportation Commission to host a meeting here. We invited, or you know, we were able to meet with Senator Cantwell. We met, you know, frequently with our nineteenth and our fourth, twenty-fourth district, um, representatives to just make sure that when the new budget came out in the new biennium, that that money stayed put and stayed in Aberdeen. We also created the RV park parking permit program. As you can see, I hope that you're not seeing the RVs around town like we used to because we now have a program that addresses that issue. Um, we also increased our business license renewals. We never had business license renewals. We had a one and done program that were forever licenses, a practice that is found nowhere in the state of Washington. So we were able to update that. And now we bring in over fifty thousand, an additional fifty thousand dollars a year for the business license renewals. I actually believe it's a hundred thousand. The elevator hadn't been replaced in over fifty years and so that was something that was on my list as well. We were able to get that done. Um, and, uh, we were able to find the funding and creatively find the funding to be able to do that. So it didn't affect the general fund. And that was all, that was about a half a million dollars that we were able to find in this to, to fix. We also had a cybersecurity breach. Um, we didn't have someone to be able to leave that. So I ended up having to leave that and we are at, it's taken a while, but we are at the final stages of like patching that up. We finally got our new things that just checked in with, um, IT about that. And we had a clean WCIA audit, um, which is meanings that mean that they are looking at all of, like a su- a specific area within the city to determine where we have vulnerabilities, where we could get sued. So they're basically waging the risk that the city is taking on by running some of those programs and we passed it. We had our first ever student representative in twenty-twenty-four. We removed the homeless camp in twenty-twenty-four. We launched the gun range project in twenty-twenty-four, which hopefully will be done by spring of twenty-twenty-five. We also took up the Wainute Dam, a thirty-plus year project that's been ignored by the city that we had to pick up and we are now dealing with that issue, which is a, a long-term issue with the, with Tacoma Power that we're going to have to solve. We also had to renew in a ten-year-old contract with the city of Cosmopolis, which all of you are familiar with and we're working through that. And hopefully, hopefully we'll finalize something in the coming weeks. What I also introduced in twenty-twenty-four, a performance metric budget that allows you to connect the work that the staff are doing with the amount of money that, um, that's being spent. So you can say, this is what we're spending on streets and these are the amount, number of sidewalks that we've replaced or the streets that we patched or the sewer lines placed so that you can connect what's being spent with what, what is being done. Um, we were able to also mitigate budget impacts by finding, we were able to, we've listened to the council and wanted to connect and align your, your priorities with the budget. So we had to make a lot of difficult choices in twenty-twenty-four's budget and we will do that again. We had to do it in twenty-twenty-five's budget and we'll have to do it again in twenty-six. Again, had another clean audit in twenty-twenty-four. Uh, we also created the voluntary early retirement, reduced hours, voluntary resignation program as a cost savings for the city. Again, we did a bring your kid to work day that I talked about. We also put together in order to spend over two million dollars of opioid abatement funding. We had to put together an opioid abatement committee. Um, so now we can say we are legitimately, we are spending this money appropriately and we're doing it in, in the way that we're required to do it. Um, I also have created and implemented a new council worker mayor work plan where I meet with them and I go over what it, whatever it is that they need. I make sure that they get the training that they need through AWC and, uh, uh, whatever they need, Robert's rules. We, we, we were able to collect, connect, excuse me, we're able to create that so that new, new council members feel prepared before they, um, come into office. Also launched a community satisfaction survey, um, which yielded a lot of votes, but we also wanted to hear what the priorities of the community were. So we were able to share that information and build our budget around that. Um, we also were part of the sober living DOC housing project. Um, so we were trying to make sure that all of the DOC and the sober sober living units in Aberdeen are registered with the state and that they meet certain requirements. Um, we also launched the quiet zone project, which we received two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for that project. So that was kind of like building the culture. And so now we're in twenty-twenty-five, I spent focus on building the future. Again, met with all of you and got a new strategic plan, mission, vision and goals, economic development session. Economic development session I hosted with all of you. We now can say that we have an economic development advisory committee that will be meeting later on this month. Again, I've also introduced quarterly performance metrics, which seem to be met very well. And I've also learned that other cities and the county will be taking that particular approach when it comes to their budgets. They will be showing that quarterly performance metrics. I also delivered legislative testimonies, legislative testimonies that have had impact, that have heard quoted, that have been quoted by other cities because of the statements that I've made about what we're doing here in Aberdeen. And then again, just really fighting to keep money here at the state. There was talk of removing levy funding or US Highway twelve rail separation project money. I, we fought to keep that here. We also were selected, but it was removed later. But we were selected for library funding for two million dollars to renovate our library, but it was removed. And then again, we were able to fight to keep museum funding in this biennium budget with the state. We are also working on a comprehensive emergency management plan. Downtown sidewalk repairs is something that we've been able to prioritize. US Highway twelve project, we ran into a lot of hiccups from folks in the private sector, but we worked through it on our negotiation skills. And then a public safety campus project, that's something that we picked up. I don't know how far we've gotten with it, but again, that is, I understand the priority, but we need to find the money. And that's exactly what we have to do, and that will be the next phase. Most likely, a project will picked up and really take off in twenty twenty six, hopefully. We also are implementing a mass notification system, something that can not only be used by emergency management, but can be used by public works to alert people of mainline outages. For example, mainline outage that might be in the neighborhood. And again, the Wainute Dam project is picking up steam, and that's a priority for us in twenty twenty five. We've launched another survey on homelessness follow-up. I've met with each of the candidates for this round of elections. We put together a utility rate advisory committee and were able to really get a lot of good feedback and recommendations from them. We've, I've also implemented monthly budget meetings with the director, so that we're, with the directors, so that we're all on the same page. Economic, oh, I've already mentioned the Economic Development Advisory Committee. And the library remodel project, World Music Day, I was a representative for the city. We had over eleven thousand people that attended that event. So, and, and then we're in the, we're in the middle of union negotiations. We're continuing with the Cosmopolis sewer project. Again, another clean state audit by the state. We were able to hire the wonderful Katie Williamson in the finance director position. And we also purchased in the last couple of meetings a mobile surveillance unit, which has already solved a lot of problematic areas in Aberdeen. And then more council engagement. You ask for town halls, you've got town halls. You ask for budget workshops, you've got budget workshops. We had more topic focused workshops. Like next week, we'll have one on the museum. We've had work sessions, and all of you have been included in some way, shape, or form in committees to include the zoning committee and committees just outside of your regular standing committees. And as of right now, we are on track to deliver a true balanced budget. So what has happened, what has changed in the last three years? We've improved our financial state. We've created a learning organization. We've fostered teamwork. We've, we've addressed ignored issues that have gone on for too long. We've increased accountability. We've increased morale, improved processes. We've instilled a sense of pride in our employees. We solve problems together as a team. We've removed the silos that plagued our departments. We've increased productivity, we've increased outcomes, we've increased recruitment, we've increased the level of our talent pool, and we have retained employees. We've improved our city image. We've increased communication. We've improved the look of our city. We've improved our relationships, not only with our employees, but with other cities, the county, government partners, businesses, community resource groups, the media, nonprofits, and property owners. We've improved productivities of our, productivity of our committees. And the key facilitator for some of those committees, you know, we've forwarded abandoned projects. We've focused on economic development. So what has the city gained from having a city administrator, and what have I learned about being a city administrator? Well, we delivered, I believe, HR Director Danny Smith gave all of you performance evaluations. Five of the twelve of you have submitted those evaluations. I averaged a ninety-one when it came to individual characteristics, professional skills, and status, ninety-two percent. Relations with elected officials, ninety-two percent. Policy execution, ninety-two percent. Reporting, ninety-two. Citizen relations, ninety-four. Fiscal management, ninety-four, and community, ninety-three. So the things that I would like to continue to improve is increase trust with the council. Get back to high-level operations. That means that I don't want to oversee a department. I want to oversee the entire operations of the city. More improved communication with the council. Bring more efficiencies to the city. Increase economic development. Strengthen relationships with legislators. Bring a public safety campus to Aberdeen. Establish and improve our credit rating. Look into long-term investments for the city. Ask a financial policy of some sort and address vacant, address the vacant buildings downtown. The benefits of having a city administrator means professional management and expertise based on experience, efficiency, data, and best practices. City administrator also brings stability and continuity to city operations. So when all of you are gone, or when Mayor Orr is gone, there is a person here who ensures that the city is stable and will continue down the path that it's headed based on the, based on all of the vision and the mission of the city. City administrators also ensure that decision-making is best on professional standards and public administration. City administrator also reduces political patronage and favoritism and encourages consistency and fairness in city services and delivery. We want to make sure, we're also hired to ensure that we're efficient, that we efficiently use taxpayer dollars. For example, using a performance-based budget, but long-term financial planning. We also strengthen the checks and balances. We also allow for strategic planning and a long-term vision of the city and to translate community goals into actionable strategies and measurable outcomes. We seek to improve public services using data, citizen feedback, and performance measure, and to increase community engagement. So lastly, I want to say thank you for allowing me to serve the city of Aberdeen. It's been a great three years, and I hope that you see that it's been a very productive three years. And with all of the millions, hundreds of, hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions of dollars, that the city has saved in my time here, I just wanted, I know that there's a lot of questions about what does she do? Well, I hope that that gave you a snapshot of what it is that we've been able to accomplish in my time here at the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Underneath established, Director Barnett.
All right, thank you. Stacy Barnum, Parks Director. Just wanted to give you a few updates on some projects that I'm working on. We did receive the permit, or the permit was approved from DOT for the new Wishkar River Bridge sign. I'm just waiting for receipt of the permit with the agreement that will need to be signed by the city so that we can move forward with that project. I submitted a fifty thousand dollar T-Mobile grant application for a new picnic shelter and a new playground border for North Aberdeen Playfield. We'll find out if we get funded in December. October fourteenth will be the fall planting in downtown Aberdeen with the Bloom Team. They like to plant pansies, well, pansies and kale in all the pots in downtown. The Aberdeen, the city of Aberdeen lodging tax grant applications are now available online on the city's website. And we also submitted a thirty thousand dollar grant application to the Grace Harbor Community Foundation for the Pioneer Parkville Three Artificial Turf Project to help cover the city's required match. Switching on there. And I want to thank the Grace Harbor Youth Soccer Club and the Grace Harbor Community Foundation. And we received, or they received a grant for seventeen thousand dollars to buy new goals for the Bishop Athletic Complex. And since this is not working well. The last slide, we received some Artemis Moon Trees. We planted a couple trees at Sam Ben Park. So the Artemis Moon Tree was grown from seed that orbited the moon November sixteenth through December eleventh. So we planted a couple Douglas Furs at Sam Ben Park. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Were those trees turned in anything weird?
I guess we're gonna find out.
Thank you. Are there any other director reports? All right, thank you. Then you'll go for a request for council action finance chair freedom.
Oh, yeah, a motion to a public hearing, or open a public hearing. Requesting city council for approval of a one-time increase from a, to a higher threshold from two thousand to four thousand for out-of-city business to require obtaining a business license within the city. This is a mandatory model ordinance change with an effective date of January first, twenty twenty six, bill twenty-five dash oh seven.
Second.
There are the first and the second. Is there any discussion on this?
Or are we doing a public hearing? And I was supposed to be open to public hearings.
Liz, do you want second? Okay, first and second, there's a, especially on opening a public hearing. All in favor? Oppose? We're down in public hearing. Same no comment?
If I move, we close the public hearing?
Okay.
Thank you. It's been good. And second, to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Now we'd like to have the second reading requesting the city council approval of a one-time increase to a higher threshold from two thousand to four thousand of, for out-of-city businesses to require obtaining a business license from the city. This is a mandatory model ordinance change with an effective date of January first, twenty twenty six, bill twenty-five oh seven.
That first and second, any discussion on this?
Quick question. I seem to remember I saw something from Association of Washington Cities saying that this had to be updated, but reverse. So they changed it?
No, in October. That's the date that they put out. I think DOR put that date out, but it's October seventeenth. So that's why we're passing it.
That's present, Ellis.
There are a number of door-to-door salespeople that come through Aberdeen selling anything from roofs to new windows to whatever. And I think this reminds us that if they come to your door, ask them if they have the city business license. Because many times, they know, and they're out there illegally.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Mayor?
Hold on. I was waiting for Sydney to say, but she's, okay. Any votes? Okay. Any votes?
Mayor Orr, I would like to motion to suspend the rules and consider the second reading as a third and pass this ordinance.
Second.
Second, first and second, to suspend the rules and make this the third reading. Is there any discussion on that? In that, all in favor?
I agree.
Hi.
Oppose? Thank you.
Sorry. Doesn't that have to be a roll?
Was there, what they were done, they were?
I think that's the ordinance, so they're creating of an ordinance. Ellis?
Yes.
Francie?
Hi.
Keegan? Oshkin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Backe?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Paratini?
Yes.
Fredo?
Yes.
Tor?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Passes.
Passes.
Okay. Next, requesting the city council to authorize the surplus of the nineteen ninety-nine F two fifty, one twenty, I'm sure, extended cab, then one FTB Z twenty L O X E E six six two two five to be sold in auction. Make a notice when you set this.
There's no question on this. All in favor?
I agree.
And both?
Hi.
Perfect, passes. I'm going to public safety with Chairperson Paratini.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you. Now on to public works with Chairperson.
Okay. Let's see, I'll start off with the updates from public works. Regarding the market street trees, the loop where it's been purchased and reacted shop, about thirty of the two different species were ordered, will be delivered in October twenty-third. Since relation should begin the following week. Policy and maintenance agreement for brightaway beautification is still in draft form. I will, it will be just revealed soon. Regarding the wastewater treatment improvements, our plans to start up the new inflow pump station in October thirteenth has been voted. The transformer that was ordered almost thirty months ago has been delayed by two months. This is pretty substantial impact to the whole. Our project team is looking at various alternatives to maintain this. Regarding the rail crossing elimination study, staff has been in contact with the Federal Railroad Administration, and an expected agreement is approximately ninety days. Once a year agreement is received, staff will bring to council for authorization. Regarding the very good compensation, the final plans and specifications are in hand. Permanent authorizations expected in February two thousand twenty-six. We currently have a two-point-five-million-dollar funding gap on the project and have requested additional funding in the office associated with the station. With the funding we have, we intend to purchase long-lived items in the future. Regarding the ADA transition plan, the public comment period is from October twenty-ninth to November twelfth. And there should be a council presentation to us on November twelfth. Regarding permitting efforts, the public's work permitting backlog has increased. Our team continues to try and balance project delivery and permitting support. We are planning work for two thousand twenty-six. It is wise to reply to the current. And regarding the citizen action request for assistance, staff has noted and been questioned in questions and wrote complaints. And online reporting option for citizen action requests can be found at the bottom of the main Aberdeen webpage at aberdeenlaw.gov. Thank you. I'll move on to our items. First, we have a report requesting the advanced environmental incorporated. He awarded the demolitions for the. We awarded the demolitions for awarded the demo, the bid for demolition of one thousand hundred and three East First Street in the amount of thirty-two thousand five hundred and five dollars eighty-four cents. Um, requesting you authorization with the mayor to sign the contract.
Second.
And you will be accept this report.
Right, that person second, is there any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're in order.
Very good.
Uh, ordinance, we have two of them. Uh, first off, requesting the the city council approve the first reading of the ordinance on the proposed vacation of a portion of the alley between Union Pacific Lots ten and eleven while forty-seven and Union Pacific Lots one through nine and third thirty block forty-seven. Bill number twenty-five dash oh. And you will be.
This. Second.
Has been second, say, discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Uh, last item is requesting that the city council approve the first reading of the amended ordinance for the zoning code to allow for minimum square footage types of housing. Bill number twenty-five dash two, and you will be accept this request.
Second.
Is there any certain, is there any discussion on this?
I'm just wondering, is this for ADUs and what the minimum square footage is?
Four hundred.
Four hundred? I saw a lot of talk in there about storage containers, tiny homes as well.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, let's see.
Um, I'm online if, um, this is Lisa Scott, Mini Development Director. So, uh, as we went through the zoning code, we, um, when we adopted it, we knew that as we go through and use the code, there might be some um tweaks that we needed to make along the way, and this was one of them. Um, and what we didn't get out of the zoning code is what we were hoping is something that addressed uh smaller homes. And so that's what this amendment is. And to answer Councilperson Hodgkins' um question on ADUs, ADUs have been allowed in our city code uh since two thousand and thirteen, I believe, is when we originally made that change. So that did not affect this at all. Um, what this does is we had no minimum square footage requirement for any factory-assembled struck, factory-assembled assembled structures, manufactured homes um at all. So what this did was set a minimum square footage of four hundred square feet, regardless of uh where it is at, um, with the exception of in a mobile home park. Um, as far as the uh storage containers, they have to meet energy and building codes, and a lot of those will not meet those standards. They have to be engineered and um site-specific engineering, as well as the structure would have to be engineered. I suppose if it could meet all of those requirements at four hundred square feet, then the answer would be yes, they could be allowed. They'd have to be built with a garage or a carport. There, all of our design standards, none of that changed. Basically, what this did is just define a faculty, factory, factory-assembled structure and manufactured home types.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 My asses, thank you. Let's all go with words, Steve.
I'm I'm sorry, I just had a short session for uh Chair. Um, I don't know if you know this, or maybe Lisa could answer this. Um, you talked about the citizen action requests and that how that's been increasing. Do we know when seat click fix is going to be brought online? I haven't heard.
Okay, I'm gonna wait.
Okay.
Okay, and now we'll move on to special agenda items for Council President Swart.
Yes, we have a request that the city council confirm the mayor's appointment of the Economic Development Committee, which would include Lee Raleigh, Cliff Figelson, Aaron Denadel, Lee Bacon, Alan Richrod, Carrie Hubbard, Scott Rainvan, and Melvin Taylor. I move we accept this request.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this?
Do we need to recue ourselves? Well, if I since we're in the, in the.
Yeah.
Okay.
House President Ellis.
Yeah, I would just like to say that um sometimes we create committees and appoint people to go, and they don't participate. Where we have a lot of hope for this committee, but it is really important and incumbent upon those members to attend meetings. I hope they do.
Yeah, um, so if I'm, you say, uh, to take your come to me as some of these meetings and like and we would replace that person, if they don't have an excuse. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, thank you. It passes. All right, now we're going on to the public comments again. If there's anybody like to make a public comment, kind of welcome to come up, remarks and comments, so. Yeah, respectfully. Start off with your name and your voice.
People by your green. I was just wondering if everybody knew what October thirteenth is. I was glad that the mayor said that you guys went to Chehalis. I worked at Chehalis for fifteen years, and so I have a lot of family and that are actually on council and stuff. So, um, October thirteenth is Indigenous Day. I'm not sure if a lot of people know that, but a lot of cities and towns are starting to recognize this day. And I know Grace Harbor is not one of them. I wonder if Next Bureau or something could change that because we do have various tribes around Grace Harbor. Um, you know, Indigenous Day, of course, a very important day for me. Um, I think I'm Indian. But um, I would like to have something, you know, if we can get together later on and figure out if we can do something for a celebration for this day or vocal because Sean and I go to Seattle to celebrate Indigenous Day. Or we go to Chicago because there, that's the closest place around this area that celebrates Indigenous Day. So, um, that's all I want to say. And I emailed a council member, and that person never responded back. So I'm hoping this council member responds back. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? In that, all right, we're coming down to pretty good of the order. Anybody have anything pretty good of the order? Okay. Now we'd like to move for a closed session. Can I get um request?
I move we go into a closed session to discuss personnel matters related to strategies for collective bargaining agreements or employment conditions when discussion in a public meeting would harm the body's negotiating position.
Here's my second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Like half an hour?
Forty-five minutes. Forty-five minutes is what's.
Thank you.
Okay.